I should have been with live, I was watching the game, doing my reactions. But we're here. How y'all doing, how y'all doing? Yo, 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 yo. Yo! Let me see something. Before we start, I gotta, you know, I gotta check my audio. Yo, 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 yo. Yo, 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 yo. Hold on, I gotta. I got a photo. For. Oh my gosh, bro, please, no. Alright, um, fuck. Damn, what the hell was I gonna do? Alright, um, alright, I had to upload the photo. Now, it's time to study, like I said, we gonna study every Monday through Thursday. So we get a hundred subscribers and pass the challenge. What the fuck? This is in a way. It's like a glitch that's happening, it's like in a way of my laptop, I can't. Yo, this is annoying. It ain't bad, but it's like a block. So, this what happened today, today won't so good. Do we win today? Oh nah, we lost, straight Ls. Straight Ls. So, for Tuesday, so we got two losses today. I kinda understand why we got two losses, I'm not tripping. But, we would be negative on US thirty and positive on May, we made, we made no money on thirty but made money on gold. Ah, this is Monday, we gonna list this, Monday, cuz it ain't no. Monday. So Monday, we caught the good setup. Did it just not do nothing? Okay, just edit. So Monday, we gonna go over that, I like going over gold first, I just do. And then Tuesday, ah damn, it's a little hot. I'm mad, we only caught a one on one. Only caught a one on one. For. We only caught a one on one for Tuesday. So look. One on one for Tuesday, and it's the only one we caught. This is a guaranteed kinda sell, this is kinda like an easy sell. Why? Cuz it kinda broke out of a. A somewhat of a range, every time I break out of a range, you can catch something real quick. That's what I have noticed. Every time I break out of a range, so we could write that in our notes. But that's like the third time I seen it, every time I break out of a range, that's like a. It upped the percentage in catching setups basically, so I will go to my, um. I wrote all my notes in. Right here. So every time, so this is going. Yeah, I think it'll go back up buying tomorrow, so. What can we write right here? As you can see. Okay. When breaking out of a range. You can catch a setup. For me, I'm gonna catch a setup with, with a better win percentage. And a higher. Or, I gotta make this show, when, when breaking out of a range, you can catch a setup with a, with, with a better, oh my gosh. When breaking out of range, you can catch, you can catch a setup with, with, with a better win percentage. And a high RRR, oh my god, that feels so. With, with a better win percentage and a high RRR, make sure we got that. Bring it down here. But these is our notes for the weekend, that's just making it better for us, we gonna write a bunch of notes that's help us. Make the strategy better, so just take notes on what you do, that's why I said do demo first, do demo first, do demo first. If you do demo first, wow, it's, it's beautiful. So, what did we do today? Let me see, I wrote Monday, Tuesday. Oh my gosh. Why the, how did this even pop, oh, I swear I don't remember writing Tuesday. I don't remember writing Tuesday, but okay, we just gonna edit this, I probably did. Monday, we gonna see what we did and how we could improve. Let's see what we did and how can we improve, so. Let's not waste no more time and just get straight into it. So first, we wanna delete these, I don't want, I don't like too much songs. So. We just gonna look at it for today, replay it, and then move on to thirty, so today, what can we act on? So today, as you can see, majority of the time we sold, which we totally agree on. We could've sold, cuz the majority of the time, it is sales, basically, as you can see. We woke up this morning. I said, hey, let's sell. So, this would have been a nice clean sell right here, as you can see. One, two, three, we see, uh, look at the store right here, boom, 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 it clears out. This would have been a nice little sell right here. And if it, somewhere right here would have been a nice little sell, somewhere around here. Or somewhere around here would have been nice, either or worked, to be honest. So, either or worked. So you woke up, if I woke up a little earlier and really. Expand the charts, I could've got something like this. And then pushed it down to here. But all right, those are two nice setups we could've caught. Two nice setups, and now let's see a setup we would've probably took, we still gotta look at setups we probably could've took, or wouldn't took. So says we could've took or wouldn't have took, let's get it. So this is a clean, so. Somewhere around here, I look, I, I seen this one this morning, but I wasn't up, once it broke out of here. Once it broke out, it showed no signs of weakness, it came up, soon as it came back down, we seen this. Came up, came back down, we seen this, this is the one right here, we not really feeding for this, but. This happened less than two minutes. Where could it have gone, where could it have gone? Did price ever come back to price where it broke out at, and it actually did? As you can see, price did come back to area where it has broken it out at, so. Keep that in mind, so keep that in mind, that could be a long TP, sometimes you could just pass the challenge in one goal off a long hold. Off a long hold. Off a long hold. So, let me see another one. Would've failed that one, another one, let's see. Boom, would've passed that one with flying colors, so even if you want to follow this one minute crazy drop off of a range, as you can see. The range gave us one, we're not counting this one, that's too small, but one opportunity, two opportunities. Three opportunities, four opportunities. Once it broke out of the range. Once it broke out of range. It gave us four sell opportunities. It was four sell opportunities. So one, two, three, four. That's a one right here, two right here, let me just, I'm put the fib on it, so y'all know, if I go back, three right here. Who was the fail, that was, this is the loser, one, two, one, right here, as I can see, is my white mouse, I ain't put no fib. Two, three, this is the loser, and four, so it'd have been three and one, you could take nice one on ones, or. I don't know, you could take it to the green line, but even if you took it to the green line, it worked every time. It's crazy, it worked every time, so that would've been a nice three point five, like, oh my gosh, look at this. It'd have been a nice three point, it, all of them would've been threes guaranteed, probably except this one, it don't look like no three. No, it probably would. So. So it's four opportunities. As you can see, the opportunity, we not gonna highlight. Highlight all the opportunities we could've caught. And what do these all have in common? Is, they touch deep in our first EMA. It's a strong following, whoa, 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 drop, whoa, 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 boom, drop, whoa, 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 boom, drop, it comes back up. It hits one, there's a one, nice one, pulls back, comes down, breaks up, comes down. We probably would want to right here, it never happens, it comes back up, and I tried to sell again right here. I don't think I'm mad at this sell, 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 um. I was looking nice two to one. Maybe it could've went a little deeper, let's see. Yeah, nice two to one, I was looking to put that in my portfolio, never happened. This never happened, and as I can see, look what happened, uh, EI wave happened. So right here, boom, one, that don't count as a touch. Breaks out, first touch, second touch, third touch. Really, you could just, you could start off right here, one, two, so you could start off right here, this is another EI touch, so one. We gonna delete this, we don't like how it looks, so one. Two, it goes up. Goes up, no matter how far it goes up, if it come back for the fourth time, goes up. And as you can see. And it goes to attack, so. If it got something right here. I don't, I'm starting not to like the two point three six, because it's like, it does hit two point three six, and it's so small that it could just wig out. But if I go from the five, it's like guaranteed, like I said, it's eighty percent, but we gonna keep testing it, cuz every time I enter two point three six, it just doesn't work. It doesn't, like, we're just starting up. It just doesn't work. Like, it's the fourth time, but like I said, I'mma just test it this whole week, and that's what testing is for. You gotta test the stuff until you just go crazy, so. Let me see, hold on. But it does hit a one on one. So nice little setup. Right here, nice little one on one, but I would try to. Boom, 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 right here, see this, boom, boom, boom. So always the one you can catch again. So selling. I sold this too, I sold this. And then I, I, I think I got out cuz it came back up, or did I, I don't know, I sold something and it came back, I would've just said break even, but we don't count break evens. I just didn't like it cuz the EI wave was sucking full effect. As you can see, price came back to. I don't really know why I wrote this here, I don't really like this line, let's delete this line. Price broke out of here, it came up here. It came up here, boom. Boom, boom, we still thinking it's a sell, and to be honest, it probably is, it's still a sell, so, I would've did. And then it touched this right here. Find something you can sell to here, so. This is, uh, I really couldn't find, give you one. So, boom, boom, this is too strong. Too strong of a buy, I probably, I'd be scared to even enter this. I like this one right here, this is probably the best of the day, right here, this was the best day, right here, if you'd have just entered from eight. To ten thirty, two hours of that, that'd have been our best time, um, after that, let's see, the sales. We could've caught a nice one on one, we caught a one on one, but we lost because we were trying to hold to down here, thinking price would come back down. Uh. Price, you, it comes back up. Price comes back up. It comes, doesn't wanna break, comes, doesn't wanna break, EI wave full effect. So as you can see, I seen reversal patterns, so basically, this is where another strategy come into play, where you just see, um, reversal patterns. It's not that you over analyzing, just you probably wouldn't wanna trade as much, like I said. This is the best time to trade, after I seen this, I think I just stopped trading for the day, I really didn't see, but let's see if we can find any sales. It came up here, it broke, once it broke here, came up, and came back down, we didn't see no sell. It came up, boom, 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 sell, with the soul here, that, that'd probably been the last sell, but as you can see, this doesn't wanna break. Don't wanna break. And, let's see, up, break, so now the patterns have reversed. Boom, 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 it comes back up, let's see, goes up, comes up, nice buys. Nice buys for today. And we came by. Nice buys, nice buys. Low key, we got the hit from here, which it didn't ever hit, it kinda did, but it hit stop loss first. But, like I said, we don't wanna really be greedy, so. Here, but we probably would've closed out that, that one on one, let's have a one on one, another one. I'd have closed out a little bit about one on one, another one, close that one on one. Another one, one on one, another one, loss, breaks out. And comes here, as you can see, now the roles has reversed, but overall, as you can see on the. It's in a sell momentum, it was just selling, 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 selling. And now. Yeah, we just selling, so this is our best opportunity, we could go back and look at a different gold chart and see what we would've did today, so. US, let's just go to a random gold chart. Let me go to this one, this is our note taking one, but we had just deleted, so. We're replaying. We could just replay from. From even here. So as y'all can see. Like I said, we got a. One touch. Two touch, go. Let me see it. One touch, two touch, go, so like I said, one touch, two touch, go. One, two, once you see here, see who we could find in this area, once it touched around here. Really didn't touch it. That's why I probably didn't care. So. Best one you probably could've got. Could have gotten, let's see this one. Like I said, this is why I said this is tricky sometimes, cuz look. The exit here, it hit our five point five, you could've entered, you could've lost, and could've finished off, I don't really like this one, one bit. But you could've entered this one. I don't like this one, bro. But. You failed that one, alright, gonna see if you come back in this. Yeah, well honesty. Well honesty, the range ain't even ranging. So. But boom. So, oh, it comes back down. As you can see, this is a range though. We trying to see if any smart, with, with like, five will replay that volume. Okay, we would've answered, we would've answered that one. I don't really see, I'm trying to understand when to take it. I don't really see, I'm trying to understand when to take it. Hold on, I got the game streaming in the background, we just froze, we got to edit that, so. You did hit a nice one on one here. If you can't catch it. Trying to think of realistically trades you could have took. Boom, that's another one. Let's see, is that another one? Boom, yes sir, still hit. It's another one. I like how that, think that's the one I took, that's probably the best looking one I took this morning. So boom, another one on one. Most of the time, I'm not saying you can't catch that two point seven one, the fact. You don't know where the market is going, it could go to five minutes. We can say, hey, the market wants to go here. We can say, hey, the market wants to come here. And we could have held to here, but we're taking nice one on one setups. That's another one we would have took, low key. So three one on ones. Never really hit the fifty mark. I probably would have entered this, so that's three. That's another one. Let's see. I probably wouldn't have took this, I probably took a nice another one on one. So that's four one on ones we would have took. Oh, even so, we could have caught a nice three R one on one, but we have to figure out, like. Okay, let's tell the honest truth, these right here, you probably could have caught three to ones, three, three, because it did never hit this price. But once it hit a price, market is never gone, it could free fall or it could whip back up, and you just don't know. You just don't know. You just don't know, so that's about four setups we could have caught, so four. Think this is where it gets nasty. It's five. It's five setups. They hit fifty, we taking this. Never really hits the fifty, but. Never really hits the fifty. Never really hits the fifty. All I need is Dylan Bruce for two rebounds and I, ha, I finally hit your family, so. I forgot where I was at. Alright, that's nasty word. So. So this right here, never hits fifty, once it hits fifty, we answer. Never hit fifty properly, because it breaks out, or this, you don't really want price to break out, you'd rather re-enter the new. Bullish off. So boom, I see this. This is a product of the environment. We gonna enter that, just for the heck of it. Enter that for the heck of it. And what I have noticed about US thirty, it does, I don't know, I think this is a gold strategy, like. I might just drop thirty, because I don't see this being very profitable on thirty. Like, high gold moves and moves different from other pairs, and that's what sometimes you gotta get. So, as you see, we gonna, did it hit, yeah, we, it comes down. Ooh, nice, nice, not, so low key. Like I said, I won one on gold and then lost one, but I really could have been two and oh if I just took the one on one, but I'm thinking. I think I took the same exact one, but I, I wanted it to come here, around here. It was a nice two to three, I think it was a two point three, so. Uh, let's see. Nice. This is nice, bro. Lost that one. We saw. Price kinda, we would have lost that one, after losing that, we probably would have gave it a break. But as you can see, price. And this is where I would have got the high R R at. You could have took this, nice one. Nice, but as you can see, price is holding this E M A. So we just gonna let it play out. Nice, nice, like, this is what I'm talking about, like. It's holding, but damn, this is a nice show. This is where you enter your, this is where you wanna enter your. Because on a five minute, it's still below. This is where you wanna enter at, this is where you wanna get your progress from. Now we gonna look at our goal and see what we took. Thirty, I ain't gonna lie, I ain't got no hope in thirty. I might just, I might just cancel and just say fuck it and just be straight, um. I like this, I like this thirty second. Nice, this is super nice. So. Here. What time are we at? We're around, around two. Now, we are probably start seeing it. But we don't see it nowhere else. Boom, 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 boom. We don't get it nowhere really else, because pricing. Price continuously go down for us today. It continuously go down, that's why we enter our one on ones. We don't see nothing that's like, hey, we wants to go down, hopefully, we could go love. I love our money through Thursday, we gonna pick up Saturday, we gonna pick up Saturday. We gonna pick up Saturday. Let me set my alarm. We gonna pick up Saturday. Who's on there? Set my alarm, five, five ten. So, this is nice though, like. We've got clean gold, like, if I, like, we gonna do thirty after this, but it. Doesn't even look as close as clean as the, um. It don't look nearly as clean. As fucking gold, gold is just a. And gold always been like this to me, it always had a, a direction of movement that it just looked like. I can get jiggy with. Because gold, I took, gold is like a fucking pink, this why the, I'm gonna tell you why, and this is exactly why this strategy work. It, some pairs, you have to, on the, you, people be like. Man, you just gotta follow share risk management. I'm not trying to be on no funny stuff, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm not trying to be funny. If the strategy worked. You know you would have passed the challenge by now, just think about it. And what am I saying? Uh, my risk always been good, like, I wasn't no dumb person that had three hundred dollars and risking. A hundred, a hundred, a hundred and say this strategy sold. That never made sense to me, even when I started trading, it never made sense to me. Like, if I had two hundred dollars, I remember I had two hundred dollars. I think this what happened, I was working at Walmart, it was like when I first started trading, I was about twenty, nineteen, I don't know. Well, how old was I? I don't think I've been trading for too damn long, now that I think about it. Think I was twenty one or twenty two, he, one of those. Twenty one, twenty two, so. I had two hundred dollars, and I kept using the same strategy, but with big ass lot sizes, I was trading Nasa hundred, remember the day. On K O T four. Ma, I had three hundred on a work session, I wanted to quit that job that day, I had a thousand and eight hundred. I had a thousand and eight hundred dollars, real money. I had three hundred, I went to a thousand eight hundred, I was just in a back, in a back, just trading, 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 they looking, I'm trading, I'm like up a thousand eight hundred. I get a little greedy. This is the beginning, I go to like, I think like. Think like to two eighty. I'm like, damn, in my head, I'm like, let me at least come back to three hundred, you feel me? That go to like eighty, so I'm like. I was upset, but I was never upset at the strategy, I'm like, damn. It kinda do work, because it worked once, it worked twice, it worked three times, it worked four times, but when I try to go all in, trying, really trying to make some money. I was trying to get a new car or something, you know, I had that Honda old, I don't know, old three, I wish I had that now, had the Honda old three and. Yeah. Yeah, man, ay yo, check it, I was at the, um. I was at Hyundai today, you know, I got a Hyundai call, so. I got some tires coming in, put them on my damn, so, order some, I'd rather order some tires and put them on my damn, so. I gotta get some work done in my call, I'm already paying about, I'm already paying a pretty penny, so. Tire dude like, I know I need new tires, that's why I was like, I'd rather order and put them on myself. He charging me, I don't even care how much money I got, he, tires is not that hard to put on, he charging me, man, I'm, I'm telling him. Hey, I'm good, I'm good, I said I got some tires coming in next month, about to put them on. He like, alright, that's cool, that's cool. But right now, we got a three for one special, but I'm telling him, my nigga, I got some tires coming in soon, like. Bro, you got cottons in your fucking ear, like, I got some tires coming in soon, he's like, I understand, I understand. But this deal is cra- and the deal won't been crazy, five hundred dollars for four tires, you get that for four, uh, nah, it probably. It's probably about five hundred, just regular price, that's regular price. I'm, it was like five, six hundred, I'm like, I got some tires coming in, bro, I got some tires coming in. You could order some tires for three ninety nine and put them on yourself, so I'm like. And I keep telling him, I, I'm, I got some tires, I, I'mma put them on, and he like, okay, okay. But these one, you can't let go, so I'm like. So I just don't say none, I'm just staring at him like, I'm really, I ain't never do this before, I'm just staring at him in his soul. Like, you're, I'm like, bro, is you not listening? I said, are you not listening? And then I think he tried to say it again, so I just got quiet, I just waited till he left. I just said, bro, the nigga was sitting in, bro, that, your, his sales price was trash, bro, you can't be a salesman like that. I understand, as a salesman, you gotta push and try to sell it, I get it, don't worry, I, I, you know, I did some selling to myself, but. You don't. Man, I'm good, okay, you could push again, yeah, I got some tires, I'm good. But then, and I said, I said it again, I said, nah, I'm good. I got some, I said the same answer, would you say the same answer? Alright, you gotta back up. I think it was again, he asked three times, I says, you good? Like. Then, I, I don't think you supposed to ask, I, I remember as a sales job, you never asked more than four times, you never asked more than four times. But other than that, look, that got us distracted, but these are straight sales we got. Straight drop, let's see the negative sales you could have got, I wanna catch some negatives, so here. Yes, let's, let's. Okay, we did put some negatives. Boom 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 boom, comes up five, so. This is it right here. You can't switch it out. This would have been a perfect day. I'm gonna tell you the perfect day, flip this to, this is it. Catch this right here. Uh, you probably would have failed this, because if it hit that, oh, we gonna say fail. This is an epic fail. So we'd have lost this one, we could have lost. We'd have lost this one, that one. This one, that one, we could, if you wanna extend it to here, can, get that nice four four, but we gonna catch that two. We could have lost that one, that's the only time we would have changed direction of the trend. That one, the one on one, that, but we try to push it down, we caught that one, that. Bro, this strategy, oh my gosh, I can't praise how good this strategy, bro, I can't wait till I actually pass each challenge, I'm, I'm about to. I'm about to, what they said, I'm about to. You feel me? I'm about to go crazy. I'm about to go cra- bro, I'm telling you, the strategy is gold, bro, this is. Bro, this strategy golden, and then I just hit two times for the fan dude. I was caught on a fan dude too. But, I, bro, this, bro. The strategy is golden, that's all I'm saying. So. So one, two, three, four, we probably would have lost one right here. Four, one, five, one, five, two, six, two. Six, three, six, three would have been a good day, we went one, one. Other than that. I fucking dig it, bro, that's all we did caught today, I dig it. This is crazy, so I'mma do a, a video, or, I'd rather do a preaching video, I'mma, let me write one video. Uh, statistics of. The gold strategy. I'mma post it, so. YouTube, video. Gold. Percentage. Nine thirty. I'mma work on a video tomorrow. Um, I already got the video, like, to be honest, I'mma just clean it up. Make it look nice and clean for y'all. So I'mma write the notes on one second, nice and clean for y'all, oh my gosh. I actually feel half broke, cause I feel like, I'm close to something, I really feel like I'm close, like, I ain't gonna lie. US thirty gave me discouraged, let's go to US thirty, we gonna delete all of this. That's, ah, this is gonna take a minute, I hate this. Oh my gosh. This is, this is gonna take a minute. Bear with me. Bear with me. Bear with me, my boys. Bear with me, my boys. Bear with me and my boy. But I'm telling you. Hey, I'm close to something, bro, I swear, gold. It's something about gold. It's something about gold. It's something about gold, I'm telling you. It's something about gold, that's just. Oh, I think I needed twenty-five points on Wagner. Uh, hold up. I think, did I put Wagner for twenty-five? Oh my gosh, Andrew Wiggins, trash, I needed him for fifteen. Casey P. Trash, bro. I might tell people start liking. Hmm, can we win the game, magic? I'll be back home. So. Let's go. This will, this, and this was our setup today. This was us today. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. This is what we caught today, mm-hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Could've caught that, so, but, I didn't, I caught, I was in this, you know what's crazy? This was the one I was in, I just got out for some reason, I was like, I kind of fired as a break even. But then, like, I, I was like, I'm not even going, like, I think I was up, but I was like, we just gonna quantify it, we gonna erase it and quantify it as ever, it would've won. I don't care if it won. I seen the reversal pattern of the E I wave. But if you do the E I wave when it's still going down, oh my gosh, it's so powerful. The E I A when it's going up, I'm kinda scared. You have to figure out different things in the market, like, how the market break out at this point, so regardless, at this point, it's gonna come back. Here. So, like I said, if you wanted to buy, you can buy, you would've just held it here, and it would've went to here. So these are the two, and I actually like these two setups, but let's look at thirty, oh my gosh, I, I don't like thirty, like, thirty. But let's look at, let's look at the statistics so far, we still wanna trade it though. We're one and four on the churchy. The dirty churchy. One for four on the dirty thirty. The dirty thirty. So I'm one for three on thirty. The goal was to buy. I was looking to buy today. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And I thought these was good buys. Would I take these again? Absolutely. I would take them again. I would've took it again. So, I seen another pattern, boom, boom, comes down to here. Gets deep. It hits at least a one on one right here. But it comes back down, it breaks out, but it is showing us it's going down, it's not really showing us it's going up, so. Overall, I'm not gonna give up on thirty, I'm not gonna give up, like I said, I'm still gonna test it. Ah, I don't. Let's see something. I really wanna brush it, I really wanna replay this shit. So, let's just say we start from here. Start from here, most likely is. Don't get buys all the, fucking buys. I don't really see nowhere we can buy. Boom, 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 boom. I gotta go somewhere up here. A lot thirty cooking at night, this shit is cooking. Thirty is cooking in the middle of the night. Nah, that looks nasty. So boom, 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 boom. Gotta buy, don't like it, boom, 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 the nine thirty can do, happening right now, and now, and now. Da, 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 that's one right there. That's, that's two right there. Uh, that's three right there, but I probably wouldn't. We gotta test the nine thirty theory. We can test the nine thirty theory. Uh, I'mma, I'mma test the nine thirty theory tomorrow. As you can see, it comes right here. Came out, we'd have lost, so one win, two win. One loss, two loss. Two loss. Three lo- why the fuck would I take that? Did I really take that? Whoa, I have to leave this. I did take two of these too, I took the two back to back. I don't know why would I take this. That was dumb of me. That's non, that's no discipline. Alright, let's go, so. These are four buys right here. Really, it should've been only three, really, it should, it should've been four. One right here. One. Two. Touch, I probably didn't held it here. Realistically. I'mma tell you all the ones we should've took. So boom, boom, boom. Came up. With the. Came right here, oh, that's, that's hell. So one. Two. Never happen again. Nothing never happens again. You wanna say right here, you just lost this one too. I probably, there's some shit I would've took, I'm not gonna get it, I would've took this and just held it for that two points. But it's, I be forgetting our own number. We lost that, so one, two. Two out of one, two out of two. Two out of two. I still don't know why I took this, this, this not even a fifty. Oh, it's a, um, it's a two point seven. Yeah, that two point seven might get canceled. Cause it, yeah, that two point seven really is, might get on a cancel list. So. These, I should've just never took. So one, two. I even get this a loss. Four, two out of two. It breaks out of here. Let's see if we can come back. We probably. Know enough. Two, two. Two, three, cause we'd have came for here. Two, three. We'd have lost that one, and we'd have lost. We just lost. Two, three. I'm, alright, so. I'm trying to understand the sell version of this. Cause I'm always running. Oh, it does have to come in clear this. So I understand, I understand. As it is, it kinda range, to be honest. So, let's get the sell part of this. So. Let's just say if you wanted to sell. You see this drop, we not gonna pick up sell, we have pick up sell right here. And did we? Yes, sir. So one sell, took a drop. Never hit, we probably would've lost that one. Would've lost that one, that'd have been four, god damn it. We just losing. I would've shot a boy. Hey, he wants to come back up. That's what I was digging. Never comes back up. Sales. This day is so confusing to me. It's so confusing. So. Let's go to this court. So, so, I'm trying to look at this, so this breaks out of the sell. This, yeah, this nasty, I ain't gonna lie. Let's go, let's look at the next, let's look at the previous day. I ain't gonna lie, today looks nasty, like. This don't, it just looks gross, like. Okay, you wanna, you, you say you wanna sell, okay, sell right here. Maybe you would've went fifty fifty selling, but this day is disgusting. This day was nasty, like gross. Let's look at the previous day. And this was, should've been buy. So boom, one, two. Three. Okay, like, this day looks cool. Maybe it was just a bad day for, may, like, I have to understand. I really have to understand. So. If I ain't gonna lie, I'mma tell a lie on the truth. Thirty is just nasty work. Let's see. I don't really, oh my gosh, this is that, you know what? I don't wanna replay thirty. I don't see nothing. And even if I wanna go, why am I going to? It doesn't make no sense to go sell, maybe we just. Don't trade for today. And that's it, this was a day you just not supposed to trade, after these happened. Oh, yeah, I was done, I was, I was really out of it. Everything looked gross. Pitiful, nasty. But yeah, um, that's all I got, I'mma go live tomorrow, maybe earlier, like seven, eight, earlier. But. Peace, I'm glad, yo, 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 alright, we out.